Economy, local jobs, entrepreneurship, community well-being, and so much more. Contact us today to learn more on how your small business could be featured on KLEK for as little as $25 per month. Shout out to Candace Brooks Realtor, available to serve you during the home buying process with a motto of clients come first and constant communication with clients. 870-816-8652, candacebrooks.com.
Broadcasting from the First National Bank Tower, this is KLEK LP Jonesboro, the voice of Arkansas Minority Advocacy Council.
Jonesboro's Community Radio Station, your life, your music, KLEK 102.5 FM.
Good Thursday morning, Jonesboro. This is meteorologist Tim Root with your KLEK 102.5 forecast, a blend of sunny clouds today in the low eighties, light southeast winds. Clouds will increase tonight, 62, 63 for the low. Lots of clouds expected Friday and Friday night. Occasional showers will be in the mid seventies Friday and in the mid sixties Friday night. Those showers will continue over the weekend, maybe a rumble of thunder. It'll be breezy to windy over the weekend, highs generally in the seventies. Your life, your music, where KLEK 102.5 FM.
From Feature Story News in London, I'm Ollie Barrett. Spain's government says it wants to change the law so sixteen and seventeen year olds can have abortions without parents' permission. India's prime minister's launched an awareness campaign to promote COVID-19 appropriate behavior as infections rise at a slower rate. The UK government's considering further tightening COVID-19 restrictions in England, and Mike Pence and Kamala Harris have sparred over issues including coronavirus at the US vice presidential debate.
It's nine oh one.
KLEK LP Jonesboro, the voice of Arkansas Minority Advocacy Council. It's now time for Community Conversations, a program focusing on the people working to make the Jonesboro community a better place while offering viewpoints from all sides of the issues. The views expressed in this program are those of the participants and do not necessarily reflect the views of KLEK 102.5 FM, the voice of Arkansas Minority Advocacy Council, or our underwriters or sponsors.
KLEK 102.5 FM, good morning to you on your Thursday. It's October eighth, 2020. This is Community Conversations, and this is our Ward Three Position Two debate for the Jonesboro City Council. KLEK is here in the studio with you. We've got Kobela Jones, host of Community Conversations. Join us via Zoom, and joining us in the studio is Chris Gibson, who is the current city councilman for Ward Three Position Two, and his challenger Linda Elwood Denny, who is also here in the studio as well. So we thank both of them for coming. And of course, KLEK, the voice of Arkansas Minority Advocacy Council. We do not endorse, support, or oppose any candidate for office. This is provided for informational purposes only. However, we do encourage you to exercise your right to vote, listen to these two people, and decide which one that you do want to vote for. Election day is November third. Early voting starts October nineteenth. If you are concerned about COVID-19, go ahead and request an absentee ballot. The days keep ticking by, so don't wait. Go ahead and request it and get it returned, preferably by dropping it back off at the clerk's office as soon as possible. So we're not going to waste any time. We're just going to quickly run over the format. We'll start with the opening statement. Each candidate will get two minutes, and then we'll go into our first segment, which Kobela will ask some questions that she came up with along with myself. There'll be two minutes to answer, then the other candidate will have two minutes to respond. The second segment, we will take questions from you in the Facebook Live watching audience. So make sure you post those questions. Each candidate will have two minutes to answer, and the other candidate will have two minutes to respond. Then for the third candidate, each candidate will get to ask a question for his or her opponent, and then we'll also get a two-minute rebuttal. And then after that, the candidates have to say something nice about each other, followed by our closing statement. So with that, we're going to go ahead and get the clock loaded up, and let's do the quick virtual coin toss. We'll let ladies go first, so you want to call heads or tails?
Heads.
All right, so see if I put this in. Oh, my camera flipped on this boot. So it's heads, and my virtual thing says tails. So Mr. Gibson, we will start with you, two-minute opening statement.
Okay, I'm Chris Gibson. I'm the incumbent for Ward Three Position Two of the Jonesboro City Council. I've served on the city council for, since 2008. I was elected when Mayor Harold Perrin decided that he was going to cast his hat into the ring and run for mayor. At that point, I had been approached by two of the mayoral candidates to try to sit in and fill that seat, and I had given some consideration. I had the opportunity to go through leadership Jonesboro in 2004, and then Mayor O. Brodel and I had a, had a one-on-one, and he said that there's nothing more, more rewarding than public service, and I really took that to heart, and it resonated with me. A little bit about myself, I'm the chief operations officer for, for a company called R Care. I've got fifty-six medical clinics in three states. I oversee about nine hundred employees. I'm a Jonesboro native, born and bred. I'm a, I'm a product of Jonesboro High School and Arkansas State University. I've got a master in exercise science and a MBA in business, in business administration. And I'm just proud to, to serve this city. It's given me and my family so much, and I, I just love giving back, and I like being a voice for the people of the city of Jonesboro. Again, I, I ask for your support for this position and hope that I can count on you for your vote.
All right, well, thank you for that, and we'll now go to Mrs. Denny with two minutes.
Good morning. My name is Linda Denny, and I was raised here in Jonesboro, went to Jonesboro Public Schools and JHS and ASU. I have a BSN accounting and an MBA, and I passed the CPA exam in 1994. So my career has mostly been in manufacturing facilities. I've worked at a number of them across the state. I was one of those people that had to leave Jonesboro to get a, get a good job. I worked in Mountain Home at Eaton Corporation for eight, eight years, loved it up there. Had, as the controller, I had to prepare the budget for the company there, and in 2001, which was the last year that I was there, my budget was, that I prepared was seventy million dollars, and twenty, twenty dollars value, that's a hundred and three million dollars. I was looking at the Jonesboro city budget, and it's right at sixty-nine million. So I feel well qualified and prepared to look at that budget and to analyze it. Been looking at it here the last couple of days, and I really like the, the way it's put together, the presentation of it. It's, has each department has two different, two, two pages. It starts out with the revenue that that department can generate, and then it goes into the expenses. And then on the next page, it talks about the capital assets that they need to purchase for that year, and then the number of employees in that department. So pretty interesting and pretty, pretty good to go through. I have had a lot of experience in identifying employee fraud at all, at some of the different companies that I've worked for, identifying and reporting the fraud. I have also a lot of experience with working with the IRS and with sales tax and things like that to correct problems that have arisen.
All right, and we've got to leave it there. Thank you so much for your opening statement. We're going to now go to Kobela, who will ask our first question.
All right, so good morning, and we'll start with ladies first, sorry, Mr. Chris. The first question is, if you are elected, what is the first ordinance or resolution you would put forth to be voted on by the council? And then Mr. Gibson says you are already a council member, same question would apply to you if you are reelected, but ladies first.
And two minutes, we'll start now.
Now, what was the question? Which, what would I, ordinance would I propose, or what? Sorry.
If you are elected, what is the first ordinance or resolution you would put forth to be voted on by the council?
Okay.
Did you understand the question?
Okay.
Two minutes starts now.
Okay, I think my main interest right now is mental health problems in Jonesboro and the crisis stabilization unit, which I feel is totally underutilized, and the homeless. And I think the homeless has a lot to do with mental illness. So I have currently been working, volunteering at the hub, and I did, I didn't really realize it was as bad as it is, and with all this COVID stuff, it's even worse than you can imagine. It's a, it's a pretty serious issue for Jonesboro. These people need a place to store their belongings, they need a place to take a shower, they need a place to get out of the rain. So that would be one of my very first projects.
All right, Mr. Gibson, two minutes starts now.
You know, as I, as I started preparing for this race, I looked back, I've not had an opponent since 2008, so I looked back at the three platforms that I, I stood behind initially when I ran in 2008, and those were public safety, infrastructure, and recruitment of industry. I think those three things are, are still in the forefront. Public safety is, as our community continues to grow, there's going to be a need for expansion. I think we also have to start looking, there was a conversation that came up at, at one of our council meetings a few weeks back, and it was about diversity in, in our public safety forces as, as far as police and fire and the lack of the diversity thereof. I think that that needs to be addressed in some form or fashion, but also, I, I think Ms. Denny raises a very valid point with the homeless situation in Jonesboro. It's, it's not evident to, to the common person that's just driving around the city of Jonesboro that it is an issue, but if you don't believe that homelessness is happening in our city, then, then you're gravely wrong, and you're, you're very much in denial. And I, I think that that's, that's something that we've also got to take a look at in the very near future. There are so many projects, I mean, we, we can go to quality of life issues, you know, used to when you were recruiting industry, they would come to you because you were accessible to rail or highways or waterways, and now they look at quality of life initiatives and what a city's doing to, to make that quality of life better. And we've got to have some of those initiatives in order to, to recruit industry and get high-paying jobs and retain the talent that comes out of Arkansas State University.
All right, we thank you for your response. We will now go to Kobela, who will now ask our next question.
Okay, so we're going to go backwards again, backwards, starting with Mr. Chris this time. What are some ways you would work with residents, or let me start over. What are some ways you would work to keep residents in your ward informed of items that are on the agenda in order for them to have adequate time to voice their concerns before the matter is voted on?
Did you understand the question?
I do.
Hold on just a second, let me get the, get the switch back up so I can get the timer loaded. All right, two minutes starts now.
You know, that, that's one thing that I feel that I've been very involved in is, is letting the community know what's going on. It's, it's one of my wife's biggest pet peeves that anytime we enter a restaurant or any, anywhere local, that I'll, I'll always stop and talk with constituents and, and be happy to voice my opinion in regard to their concerns and try to keep them informed. There was a conversation that took place on, on Tuesday night in a group of individuals, and they, they were asking a very similar question on, on the engagement and how, how we would get the word out. You know, in, in the past or historically, there, there has not been a great deal of public interest in what goes on. In fact, a lot of the common population doesn't, doesn't even understand what the city council does. And, you know, the, the involvement is getting better, but it, it's still lacking a bit. You know, we, we have these ward meetings, and I believe my last ward meeting, we only had two individuals that actually came out. I think we need to do a better job of publicizing those and encouraging folks to come out and get involved. Our roster of individuals that are interested in getting involved in committees is growing a little bit. It's still lackluster to some extent. So, you know, public involvement, it's hard to complain about a government that's doing their job if, if you don't come out and try to take part in it, and that goes with voting as well. If, you can't complain about who you've got in office if you're not going to get out and vote and, and share your voice.
All right, we will now go to Mrs. Denny. You now have two minutes.
If elected, I will use Facebook to communicate to the people about ward meetings and issues that are coming up in the city council. I would also, I've already talked with Patty Lack about preparing some community classes to educate the people more about the city council and how the city runs, and about the county, because I've spent two and a half years as a chief deputy in the county tax collector's office and have learned a lot about how the county operates, and I think that the people, if they knew, would be really interested. So I want to get that word out any way that I can.
All right, and we thank you for your response. Let me get this clock reset. All right, so, and we'll start with you on this one, Mrs. Denny. So the next question is going to kind of pivot in a little bit of a different direction. One of the, when it comes to things being accomplished in the city, sometimes, most things pass pretty easily, but sometimes things may take a little bit more controversy, such as Team Jonesboro and specifically the MLK street renaming. But I'm going to ask the question a little different this time as opposed to whether you are for it or against it, but why is it, do you think that issues such as MLK renaming and Team Jonesboro are so controversial within the city of Jonesboro? And what can be done to help keep issues like that from being so divisive? So we will start with two minutes.
Okay, I would say that the MLK renaming of the street was so controversial because it was, it was presented as a resolution, which is one and done, and you don't get an opportunity to talk and to get the community more involved in the decision-making. I think more things should be ordinances where they have three readings and communicate it, because nobody likes to have different things just pushed at them, you know? And as a controller in industry, I have spent, part of my responsibilities was to look at capital appropriation requests and just dig into those requests and look at the bids. Are they done properly? Are they legitimate? Are they, you know, what, what kind of things are going on? I know I personally was against the Team Jonesboro because I didn't trust them to do it. I know in previous years, we had a tax for just fire and police, and the next year, as I understand it, they just adjusted the baseline budget, so it really didn't help the police and fire as much as I had expected it to. And that's the kind of thing that creates distrust in government. We need more transparency, we need to understand what's going on. There has been quite a bit, as everyone knows, of, in the county especially, with theft, embezzlement, even some of the volunteer fire departments in this area have had trust misplaced and money stolen and all that kind of stuff. We need to look at that, and we need to try to, to get a handle on it.
All right, Mr. Gibson, you now have two minutes.
Well, I, I just first want to say, I've commented in regard to what Ms. Denny just, just said in regard to the public safety tax that we did sunset after five years. Every cent of that sales tax did go in some form or fashion to nothing but public safety. It was allocated specifically for that purpose and was unable to be used for anything else in the budget. So I just want to clarify that for transparency reasons. In regard to the two issues that you brought up, the Martin Luther King renaming, as well as the, the tax for public safety and quality of life, Team Jonesboro tax, so to speak, I have never in my twelve years seen two issues that have divided this community in such a way. And I think it's very important that when, when we come into important issues like that, and, and in the MLK deal, we actually did form a committee to, to look at several different avenues. And I think, I think that's where your public participation and your public involvement is, is a critical role. I think that, you know, we've got to get the community involved in decisions like that, because you're not going to get an entire community to agree with the decision of twelve individuals sitting on that council, and you're not going to get all twelve of those individuals to agree on certain matters when it comes to things that are going to impact our community so greatly. So that, that's my response.
All right, and we thank you for that, Kobela. Did you have another question? We kind of got this segment a little, little quicker than we anticipated.
Okay, well, I'll ask a question that I just, not yesterday, the other day, about utilizing spaces. I initially asked about, you know, the green spaces, but well, any vacant or green spaces, what are some ways you would push to use those spaces, either for outdoor activities, community gardens, flower beds, whatever, just utilizing them in your ward? Let me back up. Let me, let me rephrase that. How would you push to re-vent those spaces in your ward that can also be beneficial to the city as a whole?
Who do you want to start? I'm sorry, who did you want to start?
I'm so sorry, Ms. Denny.
Did both of you understand the question?
Yes.
Two minutes, Mrs. Denny.
Green spaces, I, I love the idea of green spaces. I was raised by a, a tree hugger when tree hugging wasn't popular. Of course, he said we weren't hugging trees, we were measuring them. So I would definitely look at adding more trees and taking care of the trees that we already have. Topping a tree is not a good idea. It's been proven by horticultural studies, you know, all over the country, well, all over the world. When I was in Singapore, I was amazed at how beautiful their trees and their flowers and their plantings were, and I think we need more of that, you know, here in Jonesboro. You take more pride in your area if you've got clean air to breathe and beautiful trees to look at. So every opportunity I get, I'm going to look at trees and how we can put more trees in Jonesboro.
Mr. Gibson, you have two minutes.
I have the opportunity currently to serve as the chairman of the Public Services Committee, and that's the committee that oversees the parks, sidewalks, things of that nature. And one thing that me and a few of the other sitting aldermen or council people have been discussing is the idea of pocket parks and holding developers responsible when doing, doing communities to, to incorporate more green space in pocket parks. As the chairman of the, of the Public Services Committee, I would also like to work closely with the Jonesboro Beautification Commission and, and try to figure out ways to utilize those green spaces more efficiently, more effectively, and get the most bang for our buck when it comes to, to the utilization of those spots. I, I don't disagree with Ms. Denny. You know, we, we passed a resolution over the course of the last twelve months in regards to trees, where if you cut back certain, certain tree breeds, then you've got to replace them with certain tree breeds. And I, I don't know enough about trees to be dangerous, but I, I do know that these green spaces are vital, and I, again, it goes back to quality of life. If we don't have the green space for, for the pocket parks or for walking your dog or just for general play or recreation, then we're going to lose out on recruiting industry.
All right, and we thank you for that response. And with that, we are going to end this first segment and get ready to go to a break. This is our Jonesboro City Council Ward Three Position Two debate. Going to hear from some of the people who helped make KLEK possible, but stay with us back in a few. This is KLEK 102.5 FM.
You're listening to Community Conversations on KLEK 102.5 FM. We'll be right back.
Are your kids running you ragged? I'm Mark Merrill with today's Family Minute. Some parents make their marriage a top priority. Many parents do not. Instead, they do everything for their kids to the detriment of their marriage. They help their kids with things they should do on their own. They take their kids everywhere they want to go and buy them everything they want. But when parents make their kids the center of the universe, three things happen. First, your marriage will suffer. Your spouse will only get leftovers. Second, your kids will suffer. They'll become self-absorbed, develop an entitlement mindset, and have a demanding attitude. Third, your kids' friendships will suffer because they'll become selfish in their relationships. To make sure your family priorities are straight, listen to this episode of the Family First Podcast at markmerrill.com. Remember, your family first.
Made possible by the Kappa Nu Omega chapter of Alpha Kappa Alpha Sorority Incorporated, a nonprofit organization committed to service to all mankind.
Brought to you by the Jonesboro Alumni Chapter of Kappa Alpha Phi fraternity Incorporated, dedicated to the purpose of achievement. JonesboroAlumni@gmail.com, Jonesboro AR Alumni Chapter of Kappa Alpha Phi fraternity on Facebook, and Jonesboro underscore Kappa's on Instagram.
KLEK thanks the staff of Life Strategies Counseling Incorporated for helping people through hard times in life, such as depression, family issues, stress, abuse, and more. They offer counseling and therapy for all ages, individuals, families, and groups. They are located at 1217 Stone Street. Phone number 1-866-972-1268, or online at LSCIHelp.com.
Arkansas Early Learning is accepting applications right now for childcare. We have locations all across northeast Arkansas. Applications online at AREarlyLearning.org. That's A-R-E-L-Y-Learning dot O-R-G, right here in the community at no cost. Arkansas Early Learning, offering kids a head start.
Arkansas Early Learning is a nonprofit organization.
And now back to Community Conversations on KLEK 102.5 FM.
We're back on Community Conversations on KLEK 102.5 FM with our guests, Mrs. Linda Denny and Mr. Chris Gibson, the candidates for Jonesboro City Council, Ward Three Position Two. This is our debate, and now we are inside of our second segment, in which you, the people watching on our Facebook Live feed, can ask your questions to the candidates as well. And we've got a couple right here, so we're going to go ahead and get started, and we'll start with Mr. Gibson. Derek Coleman says, do both candidates support ward-based or citywide elections? Mr. Gibson, I mean, Mr. Gibson, excuse me, you have two minutes, starting now.
Okay, initially, this question was asked the last time I was on KLEK, and my, my response is going to be the same. Initially, I was very conflicted about the, the ward voting. I, I received several calls and several emails, and I would say about eighty percent of the calls and emails that I fielded are actually outside my ward. So irrelevant of whether we do decide to take one seat to ward voting and, and the other one elected citywide, or whether we don't. I feel that I'm going to always represent this city, and I'm always going to be a voice for anyone that needs to reach out to me and ask me a question or, or get a point across. I will support the, the seat one ward voting. Fortunately, I'm in seat two, so I'll still run citywide every time that I'm reelected, and I'll always, as I said, I'll always be a voice for the entire community.
All right, and Mrs. Denny, two minutes starts now.
Well, initially, when I was looking at that, I was thinking, you know, I like the citywide voting because I did run for Quorum Court before, and although I was raised in North Jonesboro and lived there most of my life, I, I lost that election by twenty-three votes.
That shows how important votes, votes counts. Let me put ten, let me put ten seconds back on the clock, but I had to make that be known. She lost by twenty-three votes, so your vote counts. Okay, now I put time back on the clock, continue.
And, and that was my neighborhoods. Those were my people. I mean, I, I was really surprised by that. I was ahead all the way through the early voting and lost the day of the election, so very disappointed with that loss. And so, and I had so many people tell me, I, I wish I could have voted for you. I, you weren't on the ballot, that's, that's why I couldn't vote for you. So if the people want it, I, I think I would support one seat being citywide and one seat being ward only, so.
And we thank you, and we thank you for that. So we will now go on to, let me get this reset. So Vicki Lewis says, good morning, we need to be... this reset. So, Vicky Lewis says, "Good morning. We need to be looking at our special needs kids and adults having more opportunities in our community such as equine assisted therapy and a sensory gym. There's a lot of city land in the city that could be donated for our new arena. We need support for our special needs and disabilities. I am Vicky with Diego Ranch, and we are a proven help in our community. Everyone needs to reach out and get involved to make this happen. We have our new 2020 business plan ready to share. Let's make a difference right here." So, I'm going to take that comment and turn it into a question. So, what will your thoughts be on the city taking lands that may have been confiscated for lack of taxes, or any kind of vacant land that the city has is not doing anything with, and perhaps putting in place something for nonprofits to acquire that land if they so wished and want to apply for it and go through potential steps to get it? So, again, thoughts on possibly using unused city land for nonprofits to use to help out with their missions? And we'll start with Mrs. Denny this time.
I think that's an awesome idea. I know there's a pretty large piece of land right there on Johnson that was initially said to be used for the police department, but, you know, that would be an awesome place to plant a lot of trees and have some areas where you can have some, you know, some horses and some 4H activities and get the community involved. I think that would just be awesome. So, I'm totally for that. But, again, I would like to look at the whole project plan and make sure that all the i's are dotted and the t's are crossed and that we don't end up way overspending for something that, you know, can be done relatively efficiently, so.
All right, we'll go to Mr. Gibson, two minutes.
Well, first of all, kudos to those folks at Diego Ranch. I'm fortunate enough, or have been in the past fortunate enough in my professional life to be a sponsor of Diego Ranch, and it does great things for those children. I would also echo the sentiment of Ms. Denny in that regard. You know, I don't necessarily think that particular space on Johnson. I think that's only about six and a quarter acres that's sitting there that was acquired for the police department. But I would be willing to sit down and discuss with any nonprofit their ideas and what they see with the utilization of the land that's sitting there and possibly make that acquirable at a reasonable cost. I'm not certain at this point how many donors Diego Ranch has, but I know at one point they had a pretty large donor pool. And I'm sure that we could probably work together to pull those resources and get them the land that they need for their equine center.
And we thank you so much for that. See, do we have any? It don't look like we have any more questions. Kwebila, did you potentially have a question since we don't have any more questions from the live audience?
Well, go ahead, and I'm sure I will come up with something. My mind is always racing.
Okay, well, we're going to go ahead and go into our next segment. We're going to do it a little early. So, the next segment, as mentioned before, this will be where the candidates will actually get to ask a question of each other. And basically, the way it works is the person asking the question will ask the question. The other candidate will have two minutes to respond. And, oh, well, actually, we got a question from the live feed. Well, let me finish explaining it so we'll already know for the next segment. And then, the person will have a two-minute rebuttal. See, there y'all go on the live feed. Y'all had me a little worried there. So, all right, Derek Coleman says, "As the virus has now made the great state of, great city of Jonesboro in northeast Arkansas, it seems that we have problems following instructions to wear masks. Will you recommend a mask mandate because some of our elected officials have stated that masks is a problem with their rights?" And we'll start with Mr. Gibson in two minutes.
Well, that's a double-edged sword, in my opinion. I don't necessarily think a local mandate is going to make that much difference. Just to be perfectly honest, we've already got a state mandate. People can't seem to follow the governor's guidance. So, I don't know that something coming from a mayor or a city council position is going to make that big of a difference. That being said, I've worked in the healthcare industry now for 26 years. I'm almost ashamed to admit that I'm that old, but I've seen this thing firsthand. My organization has tested roughly 10,000 individuals already for COVID, and that's just in Arkansas alone. That doesn't include my Kentucky and Mississippi clinics. We're seeing about a 6% positivity rate, and many of those are coming in without symptoms. They're just wanting to be tested. So, I would personally encourage everyone to wear face coverings. It's not going to completely stop the spread, but it will at least hinder or slow the spread. And, you know, until we band together as a community, and I'm not talking about Jonesboro, I'm not talking about Arkansas, I'm talking about everywhere, until we can all come together and do what's right for our fellow man, then we're never going to get rid of this animal.
All right, we will now go to Mrs. Denny, two minutes.
Yes, I do understand the importance of the mask. In fact, I've spent many weeks making masks for my family and my friends, and I think they're very important. I have a 91-year-old father that I think he's had it. He was so sick in November and again in March that I didn't think he was going to come out of it. But, he's totally against wearing a mask, you know, and it's very difficult to make him understand that it's for his safety and for mine. And it's a really tough issue, but I definitely would encourage everyone to wear their mask. And I do, although I have to admit, I have forgotten. And it's a hard adjustment to make, you know, to have something over your face. But, I do think that maybe a suggestion or something, a strong encouragement, like Chris said, to wear your mask would be something good coming out of the city and the city council, so.
And we thank you for your response. Jessica McDuffie had a comment. I'm going to just kind of respond to it. She says, "How about using that land for the Hope Reach Dream Center for Jonesboro community?" Well, again, like Mr. Gibson said, I would contact him and the rest of the councilmen. Same with any nonprofits, because I don't want, since that question's already been asked, I don't want to rehash it. But, you know, if you've got a nonprofit and you are interested not just in city-owned land, but land owned by a private developer, contact them, explain your mission, and they may be willing to work with you because I can't say that Jonesboro is a very benevolent and giving city, and they love to support their local nonprofits. We're going to now go to Kwebila, who actually has a question.
Okay, so earlier, it was discussed about ways to try to get the residents more engaged and informed when it comes to issues facing the city council and on the agenda. And then also, one of you mentioned something about engaging with Arkansas State University. What are some ways that you would try to engage with not just the college students, but also, say, high school or middle school students? Engage them in discussions on city government and how everything works so they can in turn become more informed, engaged, and bring others along with them, say, their family members who would not otherwise be engaged?
Who do you start with?
Oh, Mr. Gibson.
That's a really, really good question. And I will say that in my professional life, I have worked with some of the school students in the East Labs to do special projects for my healthcare institutions. Also, I'll utilize them to do some process mapping and things of that nature as well, as well as some strategic planning initiatives. I've also utilized the college for some strategic planning stuff as well. So, I feel that the involvement of youth is critical. I've also had the opportunity to go out and speak to several Boy Scout, Girl Scout troops and explaining what local government actually does. And I think if you can catch those kids at an early stage and teach them the importance of involvement and, you know, how a city operates and do it in a way that's intriguing to them, then I think that that's a way to capture that market in a more effective way. I will say, as a council, over the past 12 years, we've probably not engaged in that much. I know we have used one of the East Labs for a few minor projects, but I think that we could probably extend that a little bit further out.
All right, and we'll now go to Mrs. Denny.
I'd like to say that as, when I was a chief deputy at the county tax collector's office, that we prepared a slideshow that we presented to some high school kids, and it was really a lot of fun. The kids came in there, and of course, at first, they really weren't all that interested, but it's good to let them know about exactly how taxes are assessed and how they are collected and what the money is used for. And when they found out we were going to give out little gift cards for the Sonic, they got a lot more interested in listening to the presentation. But, you kind of have to make it fun. I know that I never, and I'd like to think that people should be encouraged to be civically involved in their community and interested in what's going on. I know that I, you know, grew up thinking I just had to get a job in industry or something and not, I didn't even really think about public service until I started working for the collector's office. And I know that more people should be encouraged, and I think more girls should be encouraged to look at that and pursue that and have that as their career. I am proud that we have, you know, some ladies in county government, but, you know, you look at the Quorum Court, there's just one woman there. You look at the city council, and there's just one woman. So, we've got to get more involved. We've got to get out there, and we've got to get the girls interested at a young age and get them going, so.
All right, and we thank you for your response to that question. And that will conclude this segment of our debate. We're going to get ready to go to our next break. But when we come back from our break, the candidates will get an opportunity to ask questions of each other. So, don't go anywhere, stay right with us. This is Community Conversations on KLEK on 2.5 FM.
We're back with Money Matters. I'm Alfred Edmond Jr. People apply for a credit card for many different reasons. Some are new to the world of credit and just getting started, while others are hoping to expand their access to credit. Regardless of the reason, no one applies for a credit card hoping their application will be rejected. To improve your likelihood of approval, it helps to understand the credit decision process. According to the National Foundation for Credit Counseling, each lender has different criteria for extending credit. Therefore, you need to do your research in advance and only apply for the credit cards that are likely to grant you the credit you seek. That's why it's so important to shop around, including checking sites such as Bankrate.com and CreditHub.com to find the best cards with the right features and lowest fees for your lifestyle needs and financial situation. I'm Alfred Edmond Jr. for Money Matters, a product of American Urban Radio Networks.
Made possible by the Jonesboro Alumni Chapter of Delta Sigma Theta Sorority Incorporated, focused on joy in our sisterhood, power in our voice, and service in our hearts. www.jonesboroalumni.org.
Money Matters is brought to you by the guy right, Jonesboro Kappa League, a nonprofit organization that guides young men to a life of achievement. Kappa League Jonesboro on Facebook, Jonesboro underscore Kappa League on Instagram, and JonesboroKappaLeague@gmail.com.
Money Matters is brought to you by Bancorp South, offering checking, savings, loans, credit cards, and wealth management. www.bancorpsouth.com or 870-972-9800.
Stark's Auto Plaza and Auto Service, now under one roof. 2829 Redwood Boulevard, serving the Jonesboro community for over five years. They offer wholesale pricing to the public on vehicles, financing for everyone, and synthetic land and full synthetic oil changes with spin-on filter, with vehicle inspection included. Stark's Auto Plaza, we never say no. 870-203-9980. Details at starksautoplaza.com.
KLEK 102.5 FM salutes small businesses. Small businesses promote local character and success, keeping money in the local economy, local jobs, entrepreneurship, community well-being, and so much more. Contact us today to learn more on how your small business could be featured on KLEK for as little as $25 per month.
Shout out to Angie's Professional Cleaning, offering commercial and residential cleaning services in Jonesboro and the surrounding areas. Licensed and bonded. 870-271-9708. Shout out to Stephanie Sweat, licensed clinical social worker, owner and therapist at Vibrant Therapy. Depression, anxiety, self-esteem, work and life balance. 870-433-2870-vibrant-therapy.net.
And now, back to Community Conversations on KLEK 102.5 FM.
We're back on Community Conversation on KLEK 102.5 FM with our guests, Chris Gibson and Linda Denny, the candidates for Jonesboro City Council, Ward Three Position Two Debate. It is now time for our third segment in which the candidates will get to ask a question for each other. So, we'll start with Mrs. Denny. She'll ask her question. Mr. Gibson will have two minutes to respond, and then Mrs. Denny will have two minutes for a rebuttal. So, now you may ask your question.
Okay, here's my question. I want to know more about the ward meetings. I want to know how many you've had in the last 12 years? How was it advertised? How attended? You've already addressed part of that. What kind of topics are addressed at these meetings? Who scheduled them? Where were they? And how scheduled? And how, like I said, how advertised?
Can you ask that again? That was a litany. Can you repeat that?
Okay. I said, how many? How advertised? How they were attended? What kind of topics were involved? Where? Just everything. I just want to know everything about the ward meetings. I've lived in a ward all the years in Jonesboro, and I have to tell you, I've personally not ever heard of a ward meeting. I've heard of highway department meetings and stuff like that, but, and I have attended those, but I didn't know anything about any ward meetings.
The ward meetings began, I'm just going to spitball here because I can't recall right off the top of my head, but I think we began those around 2010. Initially, we were planning to have two a year. We would have one in the first quarter, one close to the fourth quarter, end of third, close, early fourth. The ones for our particular ward were held at Station One in the fire department. They were advertised over the Jonesboro website, the Jonesboro Sun. They were announced at all of the city council meetings. And as far as attendance, the first few years, I tried to attend all of those just so I could hear a sampling of what was going on across the city. The largest one that I recall attending was in Ward Three, I believe, and there were about 15 to 17 individuals there. The majority of our ward meetings for, I think that we probably, at capacity, had six. The last one I attended, we had two. I think that pretty well addresses everything. I mean, the topics that were covered. We talked about all of the current projects that were going on in each ward, like sidewalks, road repairs, anything of that nature. And then, we would open it up to the public and let them have comments and ask questions.
All right. And before Mrs. Denny gives her rebuttal, I just want to say once again to, actually, it's for the first time, I think, I've told you in this debate. There still are some questions coming in on our live feed. So, after this interview is over this afternoon or tonight, whenever you have time, please go back and respond to the questions that are coming in the live feed that we did not get an opportunity to ask during the last segment. So, if you could, we would greatly appreciate that. And I know those people, also who are potential voters, would appreciate that as well. So, now, we will go to Mrs. Denny for your two-minute rebuttal.
Okay. I think all of that is, it's pretty sad to realize that there wasn't that much participation. I do know that from a personal prospect, I don't usually look at the Jonesboro website, you know. Didn't really have a reason to until now. And then, you know, I haven't really been that involved in council meetings. So, I've got to figure out, or we've got to figure out, a way to get the people more involved and more interested in it and find ways to get them to know about these meetings and the things that are happening in their area. I'm not really sure how to do that. I would appreciate any kind of suggestions or comments or ideas on it, but I do think if we educate our people and realize that, I know a lot of people don't think that they can make a difference, and they can if they speak out. And a lot of times, it's difficult to speak out on your own because you're, you know... And a lot of times it's difficult to speak out on your own because you, you know, don't feel comfortable speaking in public or possibly think it would be, you know, you could get in trouble with your job or something like that. And I think that's what the council people are here for, to speak out to the people that are either unable or uncomfortable speaking out for themselves. And I, I don't have all the answers to how to get that to work, but I think that needs to be a priority and that we need to work on letting the people know that they have a say. I look around my area and I see so many apartments crammed on little bitty lots, and I know the quality of life there is not going to be good, but I have seen where there's been people that have come to the council meetings and have spoken out and have made a difference. And so that's the kind of thing that I'd like to encourage and improve on.
All right, and we thank you for that. So we will now, let me get this restart on here. Sometimes the clock don't want to act right to stay still. Okay, there we go. So now we will go to Mr. Gibson, who will now ask his question.
I'm going to be honest, I didn't prepare anything coming in. I'm just, I was just going to kind of fly by the seat of my pants. And, and Ms. Denny made a statement in her last remark that I think would be a good question for me to start with. She, she said that she wasn't really active in any of the city council meetings. So what leads you to believe that you can come in not being active or involved and pick up the reins and run with it?
All right, two minutes.
Okay, I have recently retired. I've always been very active in my career and my job, and I thought I was really looking forward to retirement, but now I realize I need something to do. My first couple of years, I took care of my dad who has stage two prostate cancer, and my husband and I moved to a new house and a lot of things have happened, but I have a lot more to offer to my community and I need to concentrate on community service now. And I am eager and excited about learning more about the city council. And absolutely, I need to get, I have been going to city council meetings here lately, but I just feel like everyone needs to be more civically minded and involved in what's going on. And I, I want to step in and do what I can to help that, absolutely.
All right, Mr. Gibson, two minutes to rebut.
Okay, I, I'm going to start with another question first, if that's okay.
Well, no, you, you have to do the rebuttal, but we've got some extra time. We can do another round of questions to each other, but respond to that one and then we'll do another round.
Um, you know, we have, for the first time in 12 years, we have a new mayor that's going to be appointed. We have three solid candidates that bring their own skillset to the table. And although I, I hear a lot of individuals in the community say, you know, it is time for a change, well, we're going to get a change in the mayoral candidate. And whomever steps into that role is going to need someone that has been dedicated and proven to utilize as a sounding board to help them navigate these uncharted waters of the times that we're in. I don't feel that someone that has not been involved even on a committee level is, I just don't think that it's time for them to throw their hat into this ring and try to run this city. It's, this is not a hobby. It's a business. It's a very, as, as Ms. Denny alluded to earlier, the last year's budget was around $69 million. I just, I just don't feel that with the mayoral change, that a change in a lot of city council, I think it's going to disrupt the apple cart. And that's, that's where I stand.
All right, so we will now, let me get the clock reset. We will now go to Mrs. Denny, who will now get a chance to ask another question.
I guess I, I do want to upset the apple cart. I do want to put some new voices in there. It's time for a change. I am, whatever, whoever the new mayor is, I want to question them. I want to vet them. I want to make sure that they're listening to the community. I have a lot of experience in industry and running, trying to run the city like a business, I think is a good idea. I know that when I started as chief deputy with Wes Eddington, I didn't have any experience in government then. We turned that office around. Within the first three months, we had a new computer system installed and the statements out. Now, the previous administration had gotten stagnant. They had, didn't get the tax statements out until July. Sometimes new blood is good.
What is your question?
Oh, I don't know.
You're giving a statement. I mean, if you want to...
My question is, I, I guess I was answering what he said about, yes, I don't have a lot of experience there in city government, but I think that's a plus, you know?
Okay, well, since you did that, then it's only fair that I give him a minute to respond to that. And then we're going to go into closing statements. So I'm going to give you, Mr. Gibson, 60 seconds to respond to what she just said.
Well, you know, just in a nutshell, again, I've, I've been dedicated to this community for the last 12 years. I have a proven track record with my voting history. I have never gone in blind on any issues that have confronted this city or this city council. Even on the rezonings, a lot of people take those lightly, but there has never been a piece of property within this city in the last 12 years that's been rezoned that I didn't actually go out, lay eyes on. At the end of the day, I'm dedicating time to this city and I'm, I'm willing to continue to do that. You mentioned a voice for the people. I feel that I've been nothing but a voice for the people over the last 12 years. I want to continue to do so, and I'll end with that.
And just out of curiosity, you say you visited every property you rezoned. Did you, did you come out here when we did our rezoning for the tower?
Uh, no, that's one that I did not.
You missed a good one there, but that has no bearing on how this election turned. That's just for my personal curiosity. All right, so we're going to go ahead and go into our closing statements, and since we led with our opening with Mr. Gibson, we will start with Mrs. Denny for our closing statement, two minutes.
Okay, I was really looking forward to the part where I said something nice about Mr. Gibson.
Oh, I'm sorry. And... Well, we gotta get that in. We've been doing so many of these, it all starts to do a blur. But we will start, we will lead with you. Yeah, we got to do the say something nice part, that's the fun part. All right, so we will lead with you. You have two minutes to say something nice about Mr. Gibson.
Okay, this isn't really the easy part because I realize he has dedicated 12 years of his life to this, and I know there's many, many times when he would have rather be with his family or with his friends or playing golf or something instead of sitting into a meeting. And I really want to thank him for that and know that we really, you know, citizens of Jonesboro appreciate, appreciate that. So thank you, Chris.
All right, and Chris?
Thank you for the comments.
All right, you now have two minutes.
Um, well, you know, as I said earlier, I commend you or anyone else that gets involved in public service. And, and when Mayor Brodel made that statement to me so many years ago, I, I will echo what he said, and anybody that's willing to throw their hat into the ring and dedicate their time away from their family, friends, I commend that. And, you know, I mentioned earlier that my wife and I can't go into a restaurant and have dinner without me having a 30 or 45 minute conversation with the people around. Anybody that's willing to absorb that, hats off to you. I appreciate you taking the interest to run.
Thank you.
All righty. Q, you haven't forget anything else, did you? You got to keep me in line, Q.
No.
Hey, you got to be able to laugh at yourself sometimes. It'll help you get much further in life. Now we will go into our two minute closing statement with Mrs. Denny.
Okay, in closing, I would just like to say that any job or any event that I've gotten involved in, I, I jump in with both feet and really start working hard. I know that there were some comments about the city, I mean, the county tax collector's office being an easy job. Well, I guess it would be an easy job if you didn't really try to do it right. And that's what, that's what Wes and I did there, and I'm very proud of that work and the increase in the tax revenue for both the county and the city that we were able to achieve there. And I just think that someone with a lot of accounting experience, and I know we have Joe Hafner on the city council and, and, you know, that's good. I just, I just really want to use some of my skills that I have to the, you know, betterment of the community. All these years I've worked for businesses and industries and, and helped with their agenda. Now is the time in my life where I want to help with the betterment of my community. So thank you, and I would really appreciate your vote. Linda Denny.
All right, Mr. Gibson?
Uh, well, I do bring experience to the table. As we've alluded to, I've, I've served now for 12 years. Ms. Denny has, has mentioned several times dealing with the budget. And although that I, although I don't serve on the finance committee at this time, my, my professional budget very much mirrors that of the city of Jonesboro. As I said, I've got about 900 employees and we're working on about an $80 million budget right now through my organization. So I, I can bring some financial sense to the table as well. I have been selected to represent the city of Jonesboro, if I am reelected, to serve on the advisory committee for large first-class cities through the Arkansas Municipal League, which I've served on now for seven years. I've chaired the Public Services Committee. I've chaired the Nominating and Rules Committee. I sit on the Public Safety Committee. I've chaired several of the subcommittees throughout the 12 years. I bring a wealth of knowledge, a wealth of experience, a wealth of commitment. Jonesboro is a great place to live, a great place to work, a great place to raise your family. Again, my name is Chris Gibson. I'm the incumbent for Ward Three, Seat Two, and I ask for your support in the upcoming November election. Be it me or be it Ms. Denny that you vote for, please just get out, exercise your right to vote, because if you don't use your voice, then you don't have a reason to complain about what's going on in your environment. Thank you.
And we thank you, and I agree with that. No matter who you vote for in any race, if you don't vote, then you can't complain. We're going to go to Q for her final comments.
Chris, I just want to say thank you to everyone for tuning in. First of all, to all of our listeners, our followers, supporters, and thank you to you, thank you, the candidates for joining us and giving us your time and sharing your thoughts on the questions that were asked. I just want to say this, as I always say, we as a community need to rely on each other. We all bring something unique to the table. We can all benefit from each other, no matter what socioeconomic status you reside in. When the needs of one are met, it benefits the community as a whole. So I hope that we take that to heart going forward. We need to look out for the lesser of those in our community and not just those in the higher positions. And I'm not just saying that, you know, trying to poke at anyone. I'm just saying, when the needs of the lesser are met, it can benefit the community as a whole greatly. So thank you all again, and I pray that, you know, everything goes well with this election. So good luck to both of you. We can't tell you who to vote for, but we do encourage you to vote.
Thank y'all for having us.
And I'll just end by saying, KLEK, the voice for Arkansas Minority Advocacy Council, we do not endorse, support, or oppose any candidate for office. These interviews are provided for informational purposes only, but as you've heard over and over again, please get out and vote. We're not going to tell you who to vote for, but please vote. November 3rd is election day. Early voting starts October 19th. If you want to vote absentee, you can do that, but hurry up and get that ballot back in so that your vote will be counted. Our debates will resume Monday, where we're going to hear from the candidates for Ward Six, Position Two, David McLean and Larry Hager. So you've got to be, just got to stay tuned in as we bring all of these debates to you. And of course, if you're watching my video, please share the video with those that would have a concern, which should be pretty much everyone. And again, keep up with what's going on, stay engaged and exercise your right to vote. Once and once again, thank Mr. Gibson and Mrs. Denny for taking part in this debate, and thank each and every one of you for listening. You guys have a great and blessed day. This is KLEK on 2.5 FM.
Broadcasting from the First National Bank Tower, this is KLEK LP Jonesboro, the voice of Arkansas Minority Advocacy Council.
Jonesboro's community radio station, your life, your music. KLEK.